At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We welcome you all here this evening and we do want you to know that we do have some special guests in which we'll get to later, but first, we have with us tonight Reverend Mike Mathis is going to lead us in our invocation. And after the invocation, he's got just a few words he would like to say before we do our pledge. So just know there'll be a little bit of a gap, so you'll be standing for just a few minutes. But at this time, if you will all please rise for our invocation.
Oh Lord God, once again in Jesus' name, we have assembled ourselves to take care of the agenda and the business, Lord, that has been planned for tonight. And as we come, Lord, we acknowledge your presence. We thank you, oh God, for how you continue to watch over the whole earth and God for your loving kindness and your mercy that you continue to bestow upon all of humanity. God, and we pause, and we're always mindful of the fact of how we, at our best state, we're weak, oh Lord, and we need you. And we call upon you tonight, Lord, to, once again, we ask you corporately and individually, Lord, to forgive us for anything, God, that we've done that have offended you as well of our, as well as our fellow man. For your word declares that it is only sin that keep us separated from you, and so we thank you. Lord, we're always so grateful, God, for the leadership and the many organizations and people that you put around us to lead and guide us and protect us. And so first, we give thanks to you for our Mayor Jackie Warner, and we thank you, God, for her leadership, the many things, God, that you have endowed her with to lead this town of Hope Mills and the accomplishments that have come by way of her leadership and her predecessors. We ask for your continued protection around her and her family as she goes out. God, we thank you for every victory. We thank you, God, for the stamina and the strength that she has to lead in the midst of adversity, not only for her, God, but the rest of the board members and everyone, God, that come alongside her to execute the things, God, that the people would like to see accomplished in this city. And Father, much, not much can happen, Lord, without the protection of our first responders. And so, God, we're forever grateful for the men and women that willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens here of Hope Mills and even in Fayetteville, and we thank you for their lives. We continue to pray for protection for them as they go out and they come in, for their wives, their children, and everyone, God, because we live in a mean world. God, and we ask, Lord, even now, Lord, for our law enforcement and firemen and emergency response, God, that you would keep warning angels at their back for people that would try to do them harm when they come to try and help and rescue. And now, Lord, we pause, and we say thank you for the many accomplishments that you have allowed to happen here in the town of Hope Mills. We thank you in advance for the financial increase, God, that's going to come about in the coming years ahead and how things have come along so well in this town. We thank you. And God, we ask you once again that you would continue to endow the board, the board members as well as Mayor Jackie Warner with your wisdom, your Godly wisdom, not man's wisdom, but your Godly wisdom, that things might go well with all of us. And we thank you now, in Jesus' name, amen.
And we're going to let you...
Oh, do that now? Okay. Michael Mathis, 6337 Caverson Court, that's on North Ramsey. Just a brief, it's in the initial stages now, unity in the community here in Hope Mills. My ministry is located at 3429 Black and Decker Road, and we're planning, hopefully, a fairly large event out there for the citizens here of Hope Mills and Cumberland County. We hope to have, we've already reserved a mobile unit from Second Harvest Food Bank. I'm talking with the CEO of, can't even think of the name of the health place in Dunn now, but they're going to bring a mobile unit down for the people to come. Everything that we do out there that day, it'll be free. It will not only be the ministry doing this, but it'll be a unified effort also. It'll be the first Saturday in August from 10 o'clock till 3 o'clock that day. And so, I'll be pretty much kind of informing the board and others here in Hope Mills and surrounding communities about this as we approach that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, I recognize our...
Oh, I thought we'd do claims.
Our scouts.
If you would all please stay standing. All right. Color code, attention. Forward march. Color code, posted cops. If you would all join in the pledge of allegiance. Scott Sloop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, two. Color code, retreat.
I'm going to let you remain standing for just another minute because I think this is something we stand for, and it's something that I'm very proud of. I don't know how often you would have two young men, two brothers, that have earned their Eagle Scout, and not only that, they were both, this happened yesterday, so I have a special certificate for them, and I'm going to just read it once, but I'll put both their names in it. Whereas Connor, I'll just make, I'm going to make it personal because I think that's important. Whereas Connor Harling is a member of Venturing Crew 32 and a child of Michelle and Hugh Harling, and Michelle's right over here, that's the mom. Dad, both mom and dad were there yesterday, but mom can be here this evening. Whereas the scouts leaders and committee members of Venturing Crew 32 take pride in announcing that Connor Harling has completed all the necessary requirements and has been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review. And whereas with due diligence and dedication to the ideals and principles of the Boy Scouts of America and Venturing Crew 32, Connor Harling has been found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas an honor recognition of such an achievement, special attention should be awarded. And what I'm going to do is read the other one, then I'll put the last statement in for both of them. Whereas Duncan Harling is a member of Venturing Crew 32 and a child of Michelle and Hugh Harling. Whereas the scout leaders and committee members of Venturing Crew 32 take pride in announcing that Duncan Harling has completed all the necessary requirements and has been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review. And whereas with due diligence and dedication to the ideals and principles of the Boy Scouts of America and Venturing Crew 32, Duncan Harling has been found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas an honor recognition of such an achievement, special attention should be awarded. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners that Duncan and Harley Harling are graduated, are congratulated for their achievement and leadership as Eagle Scouts, and wish well as they both continue to live life fulfilling ideals and principles of all Eagle Scouts and Boy Scouts of America. And I congratulate both of you. I'm very proud of you. I'm so thankful that you allowed me to be a part of your ceremony yesterday, and I wish you all well. And I know that you've already got things planned that you've got to do for summer, so just know that we're proud of you at Hope Mills, and especially mom and dad, I know they're excited, but to have two young men complete this is outstanding, so thank you.
Unless anybody's opposed, you may proceed.
That's cute.
Yeah. That was good. That was good.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you. And just to let you know, Bones, who's the third gentleman here, we also had a summit ceremony, and for those of you who don't know, summit is what Venturing gets the equal rank to Eagle. All three of the boys here have earned their summit rank as well, and currently, right now, Venturing Crew 32 has the most summits in one unit in the entire nation. So thank you very much for letting us help you and supporting the town of Hope Mills.
Thank you, and thank you, and for those of you that don't know, they helped us last year with the Lake Festival. They do a lot down at the American Legion, down on Legion Road, great assets to our town and community, so congratulations to you also, and thank you both for all that you've done to, especially with your Eagle Scout projects. And Mom, I know you and your, and Mr. Harling are very proud, so thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell will not be here this evening, he's not feeling well. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as written from May 6, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
I think we were adding, well, we were going to add under...
That memorandum to Tab 17 with the...
Memorandum of Understanding for the Art.
Tab 17, just put it with Tab 17, since it's with the art.
Yeah.
I'd like to add Mr. Bellflower's motion to add an item to the agenda. Is that the way to do it, Dan, or do we start over?
I think that's fine. I think it was Mayor Warner's.
It's Mayor Warner's.
It's a memorandum of understanding for the artwork of Professor Walls.
And it's, all these papers I have up here, maybe? I apologize, I was also in the festival committee meeting prior to this, so I've got papers galore up here. That's not it? This is not it? I've got...
Add that under Tab 17.
All right, under Tab 17, there'll be a memorandum of understanding that I've requested that it be put there for artwork, for art projects. So we'll add that to our agenda, so we'll go back and do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, adding to that the memorandum of understanding for the artwork?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
What number was that on your agenda, Madam Mayor?
17. It's still not, I still don't have a copy of it, but that's all right, we'll continue where we're going, as fast as we can get there. All right. Next, we have with us tonight, this evening, a very special gentleman that, if anybody has seen some of the postings on social media and some of the neat things that this young, this gentleman has created, you'll be, I'm sure you'll be impressed, but I wanted him to come this evening, he wanted to make a presentation to the town, and I thought it was only appropriate that he'd come so people can see the face of the person that does the great pictures. So at this time, Vince Sidnick, if you'll come, and we'll be happy to see what you have for us.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board this evening. My name is Vince Sidnick, and I am a resident of North Side of Fayetteville, but I was privileged during my 30-plus years in uniform to serve four times at Fort Bragg, and in the early 80s, I found myself living on Waldo's Beach Road. And my wife and I used to, many times, bring our young son into town, and we absolutely loved, in the evenings and weekends, it was our favorite place to go, to sit around the lake and spend hours reading books and just enjoying it. And I, along with many, many others, have watched the long and arduous process of reclamation, and I applaud, first of all, your diligence, your dedication, and your perseverance in reclaiming this iconic landmark for this beautiful town. I bought a camera back in 1966, and that started my love affair with photography. And now that I'm retired, I get the opportunity to travel a lot of places and take lots of pictures. And so I found myself, shortly after the lake reopened last year, I found myself down here at night, and it was a full moon, and it was the first time I'd seen the lake since it had been reclaimed, and it was absolutely gorgeous, wonderful. And so, I've already shared some pictures with the mayor, but I would like to take this opportunity to present a gift to the city in recognition of your hard work and in appreciation, my personal appreciation, for the many, many wonderful hours that I've already spent there, and in hopes that for many years to come, my grandchildren, great-grandchildren will have the opportunity to see it too.
This print was made special, it was bonded onto a special piece of aluminum, so that it will not fade. And hopefully, you can find a place to hang it.
We like the work. We got it, we got it. It is beautiful. And if you, if you have it on my social media Facebook page, we have quite a few of the pictures that he has made, and they're gorgeous. His photography work is unreal. The most important is that he used to live close by, he doesn't now, and he takes the time to come over. So thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I will, I will leave you this.
And I never say keep it, but now that we're going to, it's not going to be in a box for long. We're going to put it up. Yeah.
That is a picture. I see a spot in here for it already.
Thank you again, sir. Appreciate that. This is what I like about being mayor, you get to do fun stuff, and you get nice presents for the town. This is a nice present here that we've got, and I think that it's important that you know just how good our staff is. We have a special certificate, special fire district rating, and we have, it helps, just our citizens will know, and you can put this in newspapers, this is exciting, it helps our insurance ratings, our fire, for our homeowners, for our property, but our fire department, from the Department of Insurance, they have their certificate of fire district rating. Inspections are conducted by officials with the North Carolina Department of Insurance Office of State Fire Marshal, and they're required on a regular basis as part of the North Carolina Response Rating System. Routine inspections assess proper staffing levels, sufficient equipment, proper maintenance of equipment, communication capabilities, and water source availability, among other things. The Hope Mills Fire District is rated, has a rating of two, and the rating of two is right there before being number one, but the good news is that you could have as low as a 10. So where we are is excellent, and our fire department not only needs to be commended, I want them to come forward. Our town manager also has a certificate of recognition in honor of your departmental efforts to improve and achieve your new ISO rating, and this is our Hope Mills Fire Department awarded the sixth day of May 2019. So, all right. Chief Hodges and Chief Lopez. And just know how much we appreciate it, and they don't real, you don't realize it until you find out that the fire department plays a key role in a lot of things, but most importantly for property owners it does. These, these men do a great job. They do a great job all the time, but especially when we have to have an inspection like this and they're recognized by the state of North Carolina Department of Insurance. So again, thank you, thank you so much.
One second.
Thank you for everything. Somebody got a picture of them?
We'll, we'll put it on our Facebook.
You did?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, this is Lupus Awareness Month, and I have a proclamation. Whereas each year, the Lupus Foundation of America designates May as National Lupus Awareness Month to show support for the estimated 1.5 million Americans who have lupus. Whereas lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood, misunderstood autoimmune disease that ravages different parts of the body. It is difficult to diagnose, hard to live with, and challenging to treat. Whereas lupus can affect any part of the body, including the skin, lungs, heart, kidneys, and brain, no organ is spared. The disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages, and organ failure. Whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences of lupus. More than half of all the people with lupus take four or more years and visit three or more doctors before obtaining a correct diagnosis. Whereas while lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, no one is safe from lupus. African-Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, and Native Americans are two or three times more likely to develop lupus, a disparity that still remains unexplained. And whereas 53,000 North Carolinians are affected by lupus, now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month in the Town of Hope Mills. I urge each of our citizens to observe this month by educating themselves in the symptoms and impact of lupus, and join with the North Carolina Chapter of the Lupus Foundation of America in supporting programs of research, education, and community service. This is also a proclamation of the 50th anniversary of the Municipal Clerks Week, and that's from May the 5th through the 11th, it started yesterday. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk, the oldest among public servants, provides professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of the professional organizations, and it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Mayor Jackie Warner do recognize the week of May 5th through May the 11th as Municipal Clerk Week, and extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their dedication to the communities they represent, but most importantly, to our municipal clerk, Jane Starling. So thank you, Ms. Starling, for all you do, and we're very happy that we can recognize you this special week for Municipal Clerk's Week. So thank you.
Thank you.
This is also National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week at which that date falls as Police Week. Currently, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world participate in events which honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of North Carolina play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the state. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of law enforcement officers. And whereas the citizens of Hope Mills recognize and appreciate the contributions made by law enforcement officers at all levels of government. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, call upon all citizens to observe the week of May 12th through 18th as National Police Week in Hope Mills, North Carolina. And Chief, for Charito, we appreciate everything you do, and one week just doesn't seem enough, but thank you, and thank you to our police department for all they do. Have another special proclamation, it's National Public Works Week, and this is May 19th through 25th. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Hope Mills. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all our citizens. Whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Hope Mills to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now, therefore, I Mayor Jackie Warner do hereby designate the week, May 19th through 25th, National Public Works Week. I urge all Hope Mills citizens to recognize the substantial contribution public work employees make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. And Mr. Cisco, I appreciate everything you do as the leader of our public works, and just know that we know every day how special you guys are because of the way Hope Mills looks and the benefit that we have of having such a great staff. So thank you, and May 19th through 25th, again, doesn't look like enough time to recognize such a great staff. This next proclamation is also very special, and that is, whereas America is greatly indebted to those who have sacrificed for the liberty and security of our country, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States. And whereas armed force members have been unrelenting in battle, unwavering in loyalty, and unmatched in honor, and have demonstrated that freedom in the most powerful force on earth. And whereas VFW Post 10630 and the American Legion have coordinated with other veterans and civic organizations in the Hope Mills area to provide this special ceremony, now therefore, be it resolved that I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Friday, May the 3rd, 2019, as Veterans Outreach Day in the Town of Hope Mills, in tribute to all veterans, and urge all citizens to join in the expression of appreciation that the many veterans in our community who have given so much in our behalf in times of both war and peace. I'd like to give this to Greeley Mitchell and Mr. Blevins and Mr. Maury, they're representative of our Veterans Committee, and I want you to know the event they held Friday, that this is what this recognizes, and there's another member, any of members of our committee, they had a wonderful outreach on Friday down at the VFW Post on Davis Street. Great event with a lot of opportunities to help, and if they just helped one veteran to realize that they had some resource that was available, they've done an outstanding job. But I'd like to give them this special certificate and also let them know how proud we are of that event they held on Friday. And the ladies that were there too, they had good food, and the women's auxiliary helped, it was just a nice event, but really, truly, their plan of this being an annual event, and you couldn't imagine how rewarding it was to be down there, be a part of it, but to see the people come that had no idea of the many resources available. So thank you, sir, and ladies. I know, you're always there. I'm finished all of them? Yes, I'm at the end. I'm at the end. All right, now I'd like at this time to recognize our town manager, I guess along with Mr. Holland, and we will have our recommended proposed budget presented to us at this time.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to present the manager's recommended proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, and Mr. Holland is handing out the budget books. And then, following my presentation, we have a bullet on your agenda for you to consider holding the budget workshop or budget workshops in May. We've got a May calendar in the agenda, and set the date for the public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, June 3rd at 7:00 PM. So Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the Hope please email Drew and I prior to the scheduled Budget Workshop. It will be helpful to know the questions beforehand so that we may be able to do any research that is needed. Highlights included are: The Historic Preservation Commission's requests for Heritage Park and the Trade Street Museum and Old Mills Day; new carpeting for Town Hall, which will be similar to the new carpet in the Parks and Rec Building, are included; the 2030 Strategic Planning Contract is included; the ADA Study and the work on the bathrooms at Big T's is included; and the contract with McAdams for the Master Plan for Heritage Park are all included in this proposed budget. The new Public Safety Building is not included in this budget, as it will be a separate capital project fund after the budget is adopted in July. My Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget Message. The Town of Hope Mills continues to be a great place to live, as the town strives to maintain a positive balance of commercial and residential growth that enhances the town's ability to improve services provided to its citizens, and further investment in the town's future through careful and strategic planning, funding, and scheduling of capital projects, beneficial partnerships that provide opportunities for funding of improvements, innovation in developing the town's identity, and promoting the highest standards for our citizens. In accordance with the requirements of the North Carolina General Statute, I hereby submit the proposed budget for fiscal year July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, for the Town of Hope Mills. The proposed budget is designed to keep the town on a course to meet its objectives during the next fiscal year. Highlights of the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget are as follows. Revenues from the General Fund. Ad valorem taxes, $4,886,000 estimate, is based on a 99.72% collection rate, with an approximate tax base of $1,644,971, keeping the existing tax rate at .46 per $100 of valuation. The recreation tax...
No tax increase.
No tax increase. Is recommended in this budget, yes.
Made a billion in assessed value.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Drew.
That's a big deal.
That's a big deal.
The recreation tax, $600,000 estimate, is based on the existing rate of $0.05 per $100 of valuation, multiplied by the value of $0.01 of tax, which equals the amount of $117,790. Solid waste fees are $1300,000, estimate, is based on the new increase rate of $20 per month, or $240 a year. The new solid waste fees include garbage at $10.40, which was previously $10. The recycling fee at $6.50, which is the new fee, which was previously $5. And yard waste at $3.10, which was previously... Three... Previously $3, sorry. Going back from flipping back from page to page. State Shared Revenues. The state shared revenues are estimated based primarily on previous year's distributions. The largest receipts from the state are sales tax and utility franchise tax. These have been budgeted at $3,400,000 and $903,000 respectively. Fund Balance. $570,000 of unreserved, undesignated fund balance is recommended for this budget. Expenditures. From the General Fund. Capital Outlay. All capital items have been appropriated, and a list has been provided of each department's requests for year review in the Capital Outlay section of this proposed budget. Personnel. No new positions are proposed in the General Fund. Cost of Living Adjustment. The budget reflects a cost of living adjustment, or a COLA, of 1.75%. These amounts are based on information from the North Carolina League of Municipalities for the current and upcoming year. Employee Benefits. Employee Health Insurance has been budgeted with a 4.9% decrease. And that is due, I will take a moment and say, to the efforts of our employees on being healthier. So wanted to, you know, kind of highlight that that is a decrease and not an increase. So that should be highlighted. Vision Insurance increased 3%. Dental and AD and D Short Term Disability and Life Insurance did not increase at all. The budget also includes a 5% 401K contribution, and a 5% for law enforcement officers. State mandated retirement of 8.9% and 9.7% for law enforcement officers, and a longevity bonus. Debt Service. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. Parks and Rec Master Plan for Heritage Park. The proposed budget includes funds to continue the process for the Parks and Recreation Department to contract to design a master plan for Heritage Park as discussed during the budget retreat in March 2019. New Public Safety Facility Project. The proposed budget does not include funding for ongoing programming and design for a new public safety center. The public safety facility will have a separate capital project fund showing all revenues and expenditures related to the project. Sorry, it's a lot of talking. New Vehicles. The proposed budget includes the purchase of three new police cruisers and an F-250 truck for Parks and Recreation Department. All new vehicles are recommended for replacement of existing vehicles by Fleet Maintenance Department. Revenues from the PAL Bill Fund. State Distribution, $430,000 estimate based on previous year's distributions. Fund Balance. We have not appropriated any fund balance from the PAL Bill Fund. Expenditures. PAL Bill Fund. Capital is $75,000, has been budgeted for a new BACO to be shared with the Stormwater Fund. Debt Service. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. Revenues from the Stormwater Fund. Stormwater Tax is $684,000, estimate based on the county's residential and commercial parcel information. Fund Balance. We have not appropriated any funds from Stormwater Fund Balance. Expenditures from the Stormwater Fund. Capital is $75,000 for a new BACO to be shared with the PAL Bill Fund. Debt Service. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. As we proceed into the next several years, we will continue to evaluate projects and personnel needs as they relate to the provisions of services. We have several projects which will be initiated during this fiscal year. Therefore, it will be important to prioritize programming needs with future budgets. We will continue to work with town commissioners, staff, and citizens to establish our goals and objectives as the town grows to provide the level of services expected. Town staff has been instrumental in the development of this document. I commend them for their hard work in submitting requests that control costs while still providing service levels expected by the town commissioners, management, and our citizens. I would like to say a special thank you to all of our department heads, and especially the Finance Director, for their time and effort in the preparation of this document. Without their help, this budget could not have been developed to address both the present and future service needs. This budget reflects my recommendations based on departmental meetings, evaluation of existing service needs, and input from the town commissioners. The fiscal year 2019-2020 budget represents a level of funding that will allow the town to maintain, and when possible, improve current service levels while making organizational changes to provide the best possible programs for our citizens. It is important to note that with any budget, external forces can affect these projections, and it is for that reason that the figures proposed are a conservative forecast of our revenues and expenditures for this next year. Please review the information, and if you have any questions, please let Drew and I know.
All right, so you have your budget books, and I'm just going to tell you real quick what you have in your hands. Pretty much the same as last year, but this front section here, before the tabs, that's the actual budget document. So that's what's going to be. We'll have it on the website tomorrow for citizens to view. And if you have any questions relating to it, you can ask myself or Melissa. We're going to set tonight the date for the Budget Workshop, and of course, any questions that you know you're going to have, it really helps us to become prepared for that workshop meeting if you'll go ahead and let us know what they're in advance. The back section of your book, each tab, is a different department. Tab 1 considers has all the revenues, tab 2 is debt, and then you have all the departments after that. So if you have any questions about the book itself, or any of the information in it, you can give me a call or email, let me know. But you have the same book that me and Melissa have. Everything that you have in this book is everything that me and Melissa have in our book that we use to make our decisions and what we're recommending to you. So I guess that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much, and especially thank you to the fact there's no tax increase, and it...
No tax increase, no new debt.
It's a nice forecast that we can cover what the needs are and not have to raise taxes, so that's good news. Did you... Do we have a choice of meeting or hearing date? I've asked the board at this time in May...
I believe there's a calendar back behind...
Tab 6.
Tab 6, thank you. There is a May calendar...
Okay.
And a June calendar, but we were hoping that we could get all the budget, you know, if we do it in one, great. If we need more, then we can schedule another one at that budget here, at Budget Workshop. But we would like to schedule the public hearing for the first meeting in June.
Okay, so public hearing would be on June 3rd?
Yes.
And we would do that at regular budget time, I mean, regular meeting time at 7?
But the...
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so that would take... So that would take care of that. Now, as far as in May, do you have...
The May.
Do you have... Do you think one workshop will do, or are we going to look at doing more than more?
Well, that's going to depend on you all.
What's the wishes of the board?
So we can start with one, and then if we think we need another one, we can schedule another one at that workshop.
Okay.
Just to let you know, Ms. Starling and I will be at the League Conference on the 14th. We will be getting out the 20th's agenda. So we will be leaving later that afternoon, and we will be gone Wednesday, the 15th, and Thursday, the 16th, to the League Conference. Other than that, I don't believe that there's anything that conflicts with our schedules.
Would it be appropriate if we did this prior to the board meeting on the 20th? If we allowed for a workshop on that day? That would give, since Mayor Pro Tim is not here this evening, give him an opportunity to review and send any... Give us a week or so to send emails, any information we need. And with you not being here those four days, or three days...
Three days.
It would... I'm just thinking out... I'm just talking out loud, and I'm thinking if we could get questions to you by Monday...
Have it on the 20th at 5:30?
How does that sound?
Or 5?
I'd do it at 5:00.
5?
5.
The 20th at 5?
Yeah.
And then, but set the date that you need the information from us as far as questions, concerns, so that we can have those emails and give you time to look up the information that they might want, so...
That gives us two weeks to the rest of the week, the 21st through the 24th, and then the 27th... Well, the 27th is Memorial Day, but the 28th through the 31st to if we feel like we need another Budget Workshop, that gives us two weeks roughly before the June 30th. Or, I'm sorry, June 3rd, public hearing.
June 3rd meeting, okay.
We'll just start with that, the 20th.
Yeah. And so you want to have... You want to have any questions they have to you by... About what they have in their hand right now?
June 3rd.
I would say, I would say by the 16th, that Friday, don't you think, Drew?
Just whenever.
Just whenever, yeah.
That May 16th...
As long as we've got a little bit of time to research something.
So, so, May 16th will be on that Thursday? So if they have the questions to you by May 16th, and that would be... You could get prepared by the May 20th meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, so any questions, concerns, or highlighted spots on the budget, if you could send that to them by May 16th? And I'm going to put Budget Requests or Concerns. And then we'll have our Budget Hearing on May the 20th at 5:00.
No, at 7:00.
Budget Workshop.
Workshop.
The Workshop, yeah.
Workshop, at 5:00 PM on the 20th. And then our actual hearing will be on the June 37th.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
And we can always recess that meeting on the 20th and reschedule an additional meeting or workshop if needed. Okay? Does that work for you guys on the 20th?
Yeah.
All right, do we need to put that in form of a motion?
I'll make the motion if we do.
All right, so we have a motion that we'll have our Budget Workshop on May the 20th at 5:00 PM, and we'll have our Budget Hearing on June 3rd at 7:00. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. And thank you again for your hard work, and I really am excited. I appreciate looking at it and seeing that everything's balanced, and I just hope our department heads are happy, too.
Mayor, I'm also excited about the new business, businesses that are coming into town, which will probably help us with our revenue in the future.
Hopefully so, yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is Public Comments, and we do have Elizabeth Cooper signed up for Public Comments.
Elizabeth Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina, but I do live in Hope Mills. Just a couple things I wanted to touch on briefly. I haven't been here the last couple meetings, have had stuff going on, but I really wanted to speak out about the censure on the mayor. I'm really appalled that this Board of Commissioners would have done something like that to the mayor, considering all the nastiness that you all have been engaged in all year. How you could censure her for something that you're all guilty of doing, I don't understand. I really don't. I'm also wondering when these... This investigation, when are we going to get the results on that? Because I'm very interested in seeing if, you know, we're still doing the witch hunt, you know, why... Why are we wasting all this time and energy on something that should never have been an issue in the first place? Parks and Rec activities. I've been a vocal supporter of our Hope Mills Parks and Rec Development Directory, and I got to say, I would love the food truck radio. It was amazing. You had such a selection of food to eat, and the band was amazing, and the weather was amazing. It was wonderful. And I also wanted to give a nod to Up and Coming Weekly for their coverage of all the events that have been going on here in Hope Mills. I don't see that coverage anywhere else, and I wanted to point that out, and I think it's important to note that, you know, at least in my community in Steeplechase, people are not getting the information. I repost what I get from Up and Coming Weekly so that my neighbors know what's going on. But, you know, that information just isn't really available anywhere else, so thought I would mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have our Consent Agenda. After reading Consent Agenda, if there's anything that you would like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration of Approval Amendments for the March 25th... Consideration of approval amendments for the March 25th, 2019 special meeting. Consideration of approval amendments from the April 15th, 2019 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of Officer Phillips and Officer Medina to attend Police Law Institute Course. The course is 10 days long and is held at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Salemburg, North Carolina. The cost is $220 and is included in the current budget. Consideration of approval of Resolution 2019-011 against bills usurping the authority of local governments by the North Carolina General Assembly. Consideration of approval of audit contract for fiscal year 2018-2019 with Thompson Price, Scott Adams &amp; Company PA, and it's currently budgeted an amount of $18,500. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or is there any item you'd like moved to new business?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Okay? And I do have that resolution that I will be, before you leave this evening, if each of you will sign that, I do have it available for signatures. Next, old business, and this is an update from Friesen Nichols Incorporated regarding the citation for ADA compliance on the golf course. And this I'll turn over to, okay?
I'll take it.
Yeah.
So, one of the questions that has been asked is whether we need to do the ramps, the carve-outs on the parking lot to the golf course trail. And it appears that the regulation comes from the Architectural Barriers Act, which is not actually the ADA, but it is the, it is, it generally applies where you're using federal funds, so it doesn't apply directly. As I understand from Don, the engineer position is that the ADA compliance, that they sort of read into the ADA the standards of the Architectural Barriers Act. And, you know, the ADA doesn't have a lot of specific requirements as far as, you know, like it's got to be this distance and all that. So, local government is really being regulated under the ADA, but that's been pushed from federal regu, from federal enforcement to state enforcement. And as I understand it, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're being told by the engineer is that the state government is using the requirements of the ABA as what you need to do to comply with the ADA. I would like a little bit more time to just kind of look into this issue before we finalize anything, and we may need some time to finalize the memorandum of understanding of the property anyway, so if y'all will allow me a little bit additional time to do some research on this.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I have an update on the, on Friesen Nichols. They are continuing to work on their scope of services for the walking trail and the access from the parking lot. Their offices were out of commission for a couple of weeks due to illnesses, and we are anticipating having an agenda item for Board of Commissioners' consideration for the May 20th meeting. So, do you think we'll be able to have this-
I would think so.
-cleared up by then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any questions or concerns in reference to that? Okay, next thing we have is a recap of the bid award for the Hope Mills Lake Bulk Project, and this is behind tab 13.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was asked to prepare this recap on the bidding process for the Hope Mills Lake Bulkhead Project, and I'll turn it over to, I mean, it's in your agenda packet, so. Be happy to read it. Well, since Pro Tem Mitchell is not here, the article that was put in the Up and Coming this past week said that we only had one bid. That is incorrect, is that, is that, you received five, but one of them was incorrect math-
They had a mathematical error when they withdrew the bid.
So we had four to choose from, and we took the lowest bid, is that correct? Yes, that is correct. We received five bids, which were publicly opened. The lowest responsible bidder was Span Builders. They withdrew their bid because of a mathematical error in their calculations. And then Mr. Stephen Fleming recommended that we awarded the bid to the next lowest bidder, which was M&amp;E Contracting. And in order for the town to have rejected the next lowest bidder, there would have had to been a qualified reason for doing so, such as a proven history of inferior workmanship, or a proven history of non-completion, or a proven history of inaccurate cost calculations, or some other qualified reason for rejection. None of those applied to M&amp;E Contracting, so we did not, we awarded that bid. And it was completely up to the board's discretion. We could have discounted or rejected all the bids and rebid the project, but we felt at the time, I believe, and the board felt at the time, that that would not be, that would not be feasible. And when I spoke to you on the phone, you'd mentioned something about that would also make those bids public record, so- Well, they were already public knowledge, they were included, the bid tabulation sheet at that point, they were publicly opened because we did receive enough to open them. So, and that bid tabulation was included in the agenda packet for all to see. So they were, at that point, they were all made public. Another thing that was referenced, and Dan probably can also go through this, was that when we only received one bid, we're required by general statute to put it back out for rebid. And if it comes, if we only received that same one bid back, we can accept it, which is what happened with the peer, with the previous board. They only had one bid, and then it came back, and it was only that same one. But in this case, we did not just have one bid, we had five. Is that correct, general statute 143-132?
I believe, without looking at it, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Correct, it is.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So, I want to understand that the board acted on the advice of the staff, that if we were to reject all of the bids and rebid the project, that since all of the bids were public record, perhaps they would have come back higher, or we wouldn't have gotten any bids at all? And that was discussed clearly in a number of meetings prior to this board taking action on this bidding process about the pier, clearly. We also made a decision based on the recommendation from the architect, and that's Fleming. There was also a question, Madam Mayor, about little if any discussion or empathy about this project, and that's clearly false, too. This project has been discussed for well over a year. I know. I have a file this thick, from when I was Chair of Lake Advisory Committee until now, about the pier, about the projects at the lake, Phase 1, Phase 2, and 3, of every discussion that has occurred by this board in over a year. It's all documented on the Town Minutes, it's all documented on the website. You can look at all the videos of every meeting that we have had on this pier project and on the Bulkhead Project that led up to where we are. Why wasn't the Bulkhead budgeted? That was another question. Bulkhead Project was in the CIP, clearly identified in the CIP. I even have a copy of it here, if anybody wants to see it. Again, that's public knowledge as well. Finance Director will even stipulate to that. Now, why wasn't it in the budget? Well, last year, we were going through the planning process from Fleming, and no design was ever put together, and that went well past the budget year where we are now. There's no secret at all to this board or to the citizens of Hope Mills that this project was in the works and has been for over a year. It's tied to the dam permit and the erosion that is continuing to occur at that lake park, and the safety concerns of that lake park alone warranted approval of this project. Alone, safety. And I call it a cliff, because that's what it is. Another question was that this money came from the Emergency Reserve Fund. Do we have such a fund that's designated as an Emergency Reserve Fund? Drew, do we have a fund like that? A fund line anywhere?
It's fund balance.
It's fund balance, but it's not Emergency Reserve Fund. There's no such fund, none. I feel that the board has been diligent about this project for well over a year. Now, has there been some missteps? Could this, could we have done things a little better? Yeah, you bet, we could have. I'll own that. And I think the board will, too. There could have been, there's things that could have been better, but we were trying to get to the right design of the architect of this, of this boardwalk, not boardwalk, but the Bulkhead Project that's going to enhance and control the erosion, and then it has to be ADA compliant. Every time that Fleming came here with designs, this is all documented, I ain't making any of this up, and it's all in this big file I got here, too, if anybody wants to look at it. He brought back different suggestions and recommendations, only to improve the project, never to take away from it. Everything that was presented was to improve it, to enhance the park for the safety of our children and for ADA compliance. That is what probably added extra time to the project, because he would go back, he would redesign it, he would bring it back several months later and present it. And it was a working project, to the point where now, he's beginning to put the piles in next week. It's going to come with some sodding and irrigation system, it's going to re-slope the cliff, as I call it, and it's going to be a very, very nice project when it's finished. I've tried to take the high road as much as I possibly can, but this past article in the Up and Coming was unwarranted, it was uncalled for, it was unprofessional, it was not factual, it was inaccurate, and it serves no purpose at all in the way it was written. Articles like that surely don't promote the best of Hope Mills and who we are and where we're going. This past weekend, we had two great community events, two great community events, and I saw folks reading some articles in disgust and disdain, because they were handed out in these events. Wrong. Let me tell you something. I believe, and I know this, that we're doing the very best that we can to enhance the recreational opportunities of Hope Mills. There's no right time to do that Bulkhead Project, there is none. You pick any three months, just pick, just pick three months. It's not right, it's no right time to do it. But the safety of that park is what's paramount, and that's why I'm sitting here, the safety of that project, and the safety of future projects as we go forward in the coming years. That's who we are, that's what makes us the community we are, and the outpour of community people that went to our food truck rodeo, and then the first farmer's market this weekend was great. That is who we are as a community. And those are the stories that should be broadcast and shouted from the rooftops. I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you. I will remind you that the Up and Coming articles are positive, and they are about Hope Mills. Editorials are written as opinions. You have written editorials before, many of our board members that feel confident enough to write them have done so. An editorial is an opinion. An article of good, a good article was there for each one of our events, and they promoted our events and our calendar of events.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Letter to the editor was written by your husband, so that does put it in a little different-
And at this time, you cannot discuss that.
I most certainly can.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. You're doing a personal attack, and that's, we're moving on.
It's not an attack, it is-
Out of order. The next item on our agenda is new business, and the first item of new business is Item A, and that's non-public hearing item, case number 18-104. Consideration of the Hope Mills Road Development C2P Site Plan Review. Hope Mills zoning ordinances, Zone C2P, acreage 4.22, located at 2587 Hope Mills Road, North Carolina Highway 59, submitted by Soto's Investment LLC owner and George Rose Engineer. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLoughlin at this time.
Hello, Madam Mayor, board members. As stated, this is case 1804, 18104. In terms of this site plan approval request, you're dealing with a 4.22-acre tract addressed at 2587 Hope Mills Road. It's currently developed with a one-story brick church, one-story frame structure, a one-story metal building, one-story shed. Egress and ingress is currently provided off of Hope Mills Road. It currently provides for a total of 115 existing parking spaces. It's currently zoned under C2P Plan, Local Business District. Proposed uses are a church, a school, and a gymnasium. This is the subject property outlined in the yellow. This is an area photograph that kind of gives you an idea of reasonably where it's located on Hope Mills Road. This is the actual site plan. Again, these are three existing buildings. The first, and I think they're being used as such, the church, the first building was a church, it's being reopened as a church. The second building is supposed to be a school, and the third building is supposed to be a gymnasium. And I think the developer is currently proposing to develop this portion of the site at a later date with commercial uses. Staff has been in contact with him, and he has been in contact with the county, but he has not yet moved forward with that development. Right now, this is just to bring the current site into compliance.
Do we have any questions of Mr. McLoughlin at this time in reference to this? It is behind tab 14.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you say they have to put sidewalks on there, or are they already there?
Um, I think sidewalks are already there. Yeah, sidewalks are already there. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, if you know, this would be in, if they weren't there, this would be existing, a development of an existing restructure. So if you notice, we did pass that ordinance where if there's no new construction, or if that development internal didn't cross a certain threshold, sidewalks will not be required in the event that, we're talking this hypothetical, when the new development comes on the southern piece, that's what would trigger sidewalks if they were not there. But as they are there, then it's really a moot point at this point.
Okay, just a little bit off of this agenda item, we have a business in town that they were told you have to put a sidewalk in.
You talking about Serge?
Express Loop.
I'm not aware of that development. There's a pop-up, there's a Serge development- There's a pop-up, there's a Serge development that is in the process of trying to file a variance and it was a Papa John's. Both of those were approved prior to the ordinance that was passed. I think if, if, if I were to, can speak to that, those were some of the cases that prompted me to move forward with that ordinance. But I think you're talking about two cases that were approved prior to us adopting the new thresholds that would not require sidewalks.
Well, they've been there quite a long time because they cut a beautiful big oak tree down to build down that area. But just curious if they had sidewalks already, if they were going to have to put them in. We've got so many places when you go down Hope Mills Road that some have a sidewalk, some don't because it's just on one side. And I can't remember other places that don't have sidewalks, have a path.
Okay, if we can get back to this item on the agenda. Is there a recommendation for the board as far as the recommendation from our staff? Is approval of this request, do we have a motion for that or is there any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to recommend approval of this request.
Okay, we have a motion to approve case number 18-104. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on the agenda is case number 19-047. Consideration of Biscuitville CP Site Plan Review. Hope Mills zoning ordinances, Zone CP, acreage 1.3 plus or minus acres, located at 2659 Hope Mills Road, North Carolina Highway 59, submitted by Blake Jennings, Biscuitville Incorporated Developer and Wade J. Pudwell Design Firm. And I'll turn it again over to Mr. McLoughlin. This is behind tab 15.
In terms of existing conditions, again, this is a 1.33 acre tract located at the northeastern intersection of Hope Mills Road and George Owens Road. The site is currently developed with several commercial businesses. Current proposal is for the development of out parcel E, which is that vacant area in front of that existing development at the corner of George Owens and Hope Mills Road. The proposal is for a 2,982 square feet foot Biscuitville Restaurant. Egress and ingress proposed would be provided off of the existing internal shopping center drive. I think that's because DOT probably wouldn't give them a direct access to Hope Mills Road or George Owens being near there close, so close to that intersection. The proposed development does provide for 26 parking spaces. And there's a remaining 2,100, 21,000 square foot area of that out parcel E that is to remain vacant for future development. Staff has actually had a sketch plan review with the developer of this. There are two additional developments that they have talked to us about. But I think the first one they're moving forward officially is the Biscuitville. And this is an area photograph to kind of give you the location of it. This is the entire out parcel E, but the development you're looking at, Biscuitville, is to the portion to the south. And this is the proposed site plan.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Address sidewalk requirements for the site plan.
Sidewalk requirements, there are existing sidewalks here. If you look at this shaded area here, those sidewalks are required. This, they did actually come in and subdivide this out. So based on the plan they use to subdivide, this is technically the portion of out parcel E being developed. So the sidewalks will be required to be extended from here to here. Now, when this portion of the development is, is, does move forward, then those sidewalks have to be extended. But they are providing sidewalks in the area based on the duration of the property that they subdivided off.
So the developer's going to put in sidewalks or?
Yeah, these sidewalks are existing.
Yeah.
Here. And then they're going to be required to put them in here.
Okay. Only just, just on the site plan that they're, that they're going to build on, I got it.
Yes. Now, had they, you know, I mean, the subdivision of that site is what cut down that area. But like I said before, when this area here is developed, then those sidewalks have to be extended by the person that's moving forward with that project.
So we're going to have a sidewalk that's just going to go up to the middle piece and then it's just stop?
That's typically what happens. Some developers who hate them, the phrase that they use is sidewalks to nowhere.
Yeah.
So what that basically means is that at the time this development moves forward, it appears to be something that doesn't connect. But when this next development comes, they'll have to tie in. And that's essentially how you get sidewalks throughout an entire city. This happens in conjunction with us doing our grants through FAMPOE to plug in areas that are tied or outlined in the Southwest Plan. So when you have developers required to put in sidewalks, we're putting in sidewalks. Eventually, you will have sidewalks that do connect. But there are in some instances based on where the new development is coming, where there is no sidewalk. You may have a situation where it doesn't connect at the time of the approval.
Does the developer own both pieces or is just one?
I'm not sure in terms of who the owner is with respect to Biscuitville purchasing this piece.
I can answer that question.
Yep.
We are only purchasing this other acre, this other portion. Tom Bradler was still in the order.
Okay.
Yeah.
The guy who owns the curb.
Yeah.
Only purchasing what you see as the south portion.
This piece here.
Okay. Okay.
And like I said, that ties to them subdividing it off. They purchased that smaller piece, so they're only requiring this then sidewalks for the piece that they're developing.
Well, thanks, thanks for the answer because I think you know where I was going.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I surely don't want you guys to put somebody else's sidewalk in.
Yeah.
No, but I do know he's working on something for this north of the city.
Okay, so there's going, okay, so there's going to be another opportunity to finish the complete sidewalk. That's where I'm going with it.
We brought the developer in, probably about four or five months ago for a sketch plan. But it appears that they're moving forward with the Biscuitville portion right now. I'm not, I don't know what the timeline is for the future development, but I do anticipate these, this parcel here.
Yeah.
And the parcel above.
Above, yeah. That's going to be a tie with a nice sidewalk that's going to connect on both of them.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, that's all the questions I have. I'll make a motion unless somebody else has a question.
Any other questions? Or do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve, to approve case 19047 as presented.
Have a motion to approve case 19-047. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, welcome Biscuitville.
Welcome, yeah.
Will you be open for breakfast in the morning?
Next, we have non-public hearing item, case number 19-049. Consideration of a Chick-fil-A restaurant in Hope Mills. Site plan, CP Site Plan Review. Hope Mills zoning ordinance, Zone CP, acreage 2.57 acres plus or minus, located at 3101 North Main Street, North Carolina Highway 59. Submitted by Chick-fil-A Incorporated Developer and C. Robert George and Associate Engineer. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLoughlin. It's behind tab 16.
Existing conditions tied to this development, it's currently a 2.57 acre tract. It's recently, and the rear portion of it was recently annexed into the town of Hope Mills Limits, designated as CP Plan Commercial through the initial zoning process. It's currently addressed at 3101 North Main Street. The proposal is for a 4,850 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant. Egress and ingress to the development is provided off of, proposed off of North Main Street. The development provides for 71 parking spaces and tied to another ordinance that we passed recently, they do have cross lateral access tying into the adjacent commercial property to the south. This is your area photograph. This portion here is the portion that was annexed into the town. This portion was already in the town, already zoned CP. So we annexed this portion of it in. They did consolidate this in the one parcel and it was initially zoned under CP, the CP District as well. And here is your site plan. Also, just as a side note, they have submitted to stormwater. So what we're doing, a lot of times with our dynamic, our plan review team, we bring these developers in real early. So by the time we get to this level, we're really just fine tuning. They have submitted, it hadn't been approved to stormwater, but our stormwater department is currently reviewing the stormwater. I think our fire department has looked at it as well. They would not require a DOT, I mean, a driveway permit from our town Public Works Department being in this on a DOT roadway. We also have landscape plan located here. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. McLoughlin?
Madam Mayor, I have any questions, but I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve case number, I think everybody wants to approve this one.
Not as much as me.
19.049. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you.
Maybe he'll be open for breakfast in the morning.
Both of them. Both of them.
Consideration and discussion of setting date for ceremonial ribbon cutting, accepting donated sculptures. And I would, I would probably request that we could table this because.
Mayor Pro Tim is not here.
And for the general public to know, the Warner family has purchased the bicycle that is out front, the art structure, and has donated it to the town. Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell and his firm has, have purchased the waves down at the lake and they have donated that to the town. So we were going to do a, plan a date to actually have a ribbon cutting and let the town accept those sculptures. But we'll wait until such time as Mayor Pro Tim is here. I would also.
I'll make a motion. We table that if necessary.
Okay. I think that would be, do we need a motion to table? Okay, so have a motion to table. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And I would like to comment at this time that there is a structure directly in front of this building that is the red structure that's called the core. It is for sale. It is, the cost is $500. The money goes to the student that actually sculptured it. He has since graduated, so it is on loan to us, but it is for sale. And any structure that is purchased, again, can either be donated back to the town or it can be purchased for someone so that we only move it once is what the student's interested in because they have graduated. But again, that would be the red one right out front. Next is update on requests for engineering quotes on the Episcopal Parish House. And I know that we have one.
The MOU, Madam Mayor.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Correct. Scratch that. I knew, I knew you have yours. I got it. Of course, those of you that know that the art sculptures out front and then the board is much aware too that we had a partnership with the University of Pembroke. And because of the timing, we're going to have to wait and extend that partnership for next year because of the student work is actually being obligated for another municipality in North Carolina. I did speak with Adam Walls, who is a professor. And strictly by coincidence, I was in Salisbury and saw some of his work there. I was in Anderson, South Carolina and saw some of his work there. I saw pictures of his work in Boone. And so then I find out that he also, aside from the university, has his own sculpture work that he puts out on loan. And it would be here until we got some new artwork that we could actually do through the partnership with Pembroke. And this, he requested a memorandum of understanding. And the board, if you, you have this in front of you and what this would require would be, it's not a partnership with Pembroke at all. It's only with Professor Walls. And so it states that the parties to this memorandum of understanding are Adam Walls and the town of Hope Mills. The purpose of this memo is to set forth the understanding and agreement between the parties concerning the ownership and the use of various art sculptures created by Walls and loaned to the town for display. The use of the property pursuant to the terms of this agreement, Walls may loan sculptures to the town for temporary display at a location to be determined by the town. Ownership of the property, the parties hereby acknowledge and agree that all sculptures loaned to the town by Walls shall remain the property of Walls. Walls may reclaim any structure loaned to the town by providing the town with two weeks' written notice and such notice may be waived by the town. Indemnity, the town agrees to demify Walls for any claim for personal injury incurred as a result of the town's display of sculptures. Duration, the duration of each loan made pursuant to this agreement shall be one year, provided that the parties may agree to a shorter or longer duration by mutual written agreement. Termination, either party may revoke this memorandum of understanding by providing 30 days' written notice to the other party. And what Professor Walls has stated is that these structures have been on display and there may be people that want to purchase them. And so that's why his memorandum of understanding would be that if he did have a buyer, that he could come to the town and, but he would be willing to replace any structure with another structure if he did have those that he could loan to the town. So I just need, if you will, I need a motion to approve this memorandum. I guess attorney, yes.
On that with respect to the indemnity provision. At this point, we haven't spoken with the league yet to determine if, if we could have that covered under our insurance policy. As a general rule, they don't cover things that are incurred by a written contract. So we can't just, you take on liability pursuant to a written contract and have that covered on the insurance agreement. So we need to find out if this would be something covered, you know, but without regard to this indemnity agreement.
Right.
If it's not covered, we can still enter into the agreement, but any liability would come out of the town's.
Well, I think we've been very fortunate in that we've had structures that currently could be climbed on and could be, and we've been very fortunate, I think, that they, because where they're located, we haven't, we had an issue or a problem, I don't think, unless Chief of Chair, if you're aware of anything, I think because they're up here around the town and they're out in the open that we know.
Probably unlikely, but I have to point it out just so y'all are aware.
Okay, all right. And I agree.
Shall we table that, sir?
It's up to y'all.
Can we do a contingent on, can we go ahead and vote on it and then do a contingent on what's brought back with liability? Is that the best, what's the best way?
Well, you could either, you could do a couple of different things. You could approve it knowing that if the league doesn't cover it, it'll come out of the town's budget if there is a claim for a personal injury that is successful. That's the other thing. I mean, even if someone does get injured and makes a claim, that doesn't necessarily mean that they recover. But in the event that they do recover and the insurance doesn't cover it, it would come out of the town's funds. So you could either approve it now knowing that that potential is out there, unlikely as it may be. It is out there. You could wait to see what the league says. You could.
The one thing that I would just like the town to know or the commissioners to know is that there is a structure on the back of a truck that's leaving Boone. And rather than take it off that truck, that was the reason for wanting to have a memorandum of understanding. He's moving structures right now and rather than move them to somewhere else, he was going to move them here because he felt obligated to the town because of, the ones that have been removed because the student artwork was taken when the students finished up their school year. The ones, the vacant spots we have. So I just ask the commissioners that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding. But knowing that if something happens, we are liable for it.
Okay, I appreciate that, Commissioner Lee, because I do believe that this is a good thing. And some of these projects that he's bringing are very different from what we've had. And I will provide pictures by the next meeting because he was going to take pictures and send them to me or send them to the board or send them to Ms. Adams. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you. And I'll, I look forward to, and I'll show you a picture, the big red one that's called Life, that's would be coming from Boone. It's been up at Boone for a year.
Let me ask you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Once the lake park is finished, will we have the opportunity for him to put artwork back in the lake park?
Yes. In fact, he's not, he would not be concerned where that pad is down there. It would not be in the way of any work. So he's already said that if we ask, he'll put one back at the pad. Because the one that Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell has purchased is actually at the lake.
Yeah.
And the other pad is removed away from, it's on the other.
Right.
Edge. So, so yes, he could put one back. And then the other thing that I think is a good thing is there's two Hope Mills art students that are going to send some information to our town manager because they're interested in showing their art. There's sculptures here apart from any type of agreement because they are, they've got their own structures and they're from Hope Mills. So I think that's kind of interest will be good for us too.
That's how you get a memorandum of.
Yeah. All right, next we have an update on requests for engineering quotes on the Episcopal Parish House. And I guess turn over to Major, to Manager Adams. I know that we have the one here before.
Well, we've got one in the agenda packet and then the one I emailed you. Well, we've got one in the agenda packet and then the one I emailed you all this afternoon.
Okay.
So we have two. So. The one in the agenda packet is from E.B. Pancook in the amount of one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars for a Level A visual inspection. We did ask for a quote for a Level B inspection, but after discussion with the engineer, a Level B inspection usually involves material testing. And from reading the reports that we have sent him, he explained that it appears that the building has primarily termite damage and he felt there would not be a lot of testing that could be performed that would be of any benefit. So after discussion with him, it was determined that a Level A inspection should be adequate for him to determine the viability of restoration and a rough cost estimate to do so. The other quote that we received is from Chuck Lysick, from Lysick Associates. And just a point of, that I wanted to point out, this firm has previously worked on this building for the, for our insurance carrier, the North Carolina, North Carolina League of Municipalities in January when the car hit the front of the building. So they are familiar with the building somewhat. Their fee, which includes some items that I believe are not included in Mr. Pancook's quote, their quote is for four thousand nine hundred and five dollars, which is for review documents, travel time, site time, calculations, preliminary drawings, cost estimate and travel expenses. I don't believe Mr. Pancook's included travel time or any travel expenses.
Okay, what was the first, what was the first quote again?
Eighteen seventy-five, but it does not include the items that Lysick has included. So his is à la carte, there would be more fees added, more costs added to it. The Lysick quote is all-inclusive. And we've not received a quote from the other engineer as of today.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Question I have, Melissa, is from the Lysick proposal, is this a, is this the same? Is this a Level A?
Yes. It's, we, we've discussed basically the same thing that we, that we discussed with Mr. Pancook.
Okay.
We let the other engineers know what we wanted and what we were interested in, that we needed something that was going to give us the viability of the restoration of the building.
Right.
And whether that was possible and whether or not, and a rough cost estimate.
Reason I ask is because, look, it appears there's three thousand dollar difference between the two quotes.
But the first one does not include the drawings, which is nine hundred and sixty on this quote, travel time, travel time, which is three sixty and a, and a travel expense of a hundred.
Doesn't include the calculations either.
Yeah.
The first one doesn't have the calculations.
And all that's going to be extra with.
Yeah. Is it going to be extra?
Is that extra with the statute engineering?
In that column, he says they can provide these services for additional fee.
Right, that's correct. Lysick has a licensed contractor that will be working with the architect to determine the cost estimate. I don't believe Mr. Pancook has that either.
I'm just trying to justify the three thousand dollar difference and I think I see where it is.
He's, the, the first professional is only going to do what he's calling a visual report.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at too.
And then that visual report will be written, whereas any of the structural analysis calculations, he's not doing those that this one is doing, so I don't know how.
Well, I tell you, if I look at a quote, I surely want it inclusive. I don't want something that's just visual and then the opportunity for additional fees and additional work and. I know there may be a three thousand dollar difference, but this one here from Lysick is an inclusive proposal.
Covers it all.
Covers it all, we're not just talking visual here, you got the whole, you got the whole thing. So that's my motion, Madam Mayor. Unless anybody's got any questions.
I think that, if you also read the final paragraph in this offer, it says the expenses incurred that are necessary for the scope of this service, including travel substance and other supplies and services, are reimbursable at the cost plus a twenty percent administrative handling charge. So I guess what's going to happen is on top of this eighteen seventy-five, you'll have those other fees added.
That's correct.
So that probably would mean that this, this eighteen seventy-five cost is not really a true.
No, it's not a true proposal because it has the opportunity going over.
Yeah.
This forty-eight hundred from Lysick, so that's my, that's my motion.
You just have to write a blank check there.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
It would be open-ended too because they list other things that they would be charging us for. So we have a motion on the floor that we accept the Lysick rate and that would be for four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and that would be to do the, the structural engineering and checking to make the feasibility of repairing the parish house. Any others comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Dan a question?
Yes.
Would that first quote be an incomplete quote? Did they bid everything we asked them to bid?
Well, I mean, we didn't ask them to include their travel time, that's what they gave us. So, I mean, that, we asked them for, you know, the, the quote to do the inspection and when we asked for the quote, we assumed that they would include their travel time. However, they did not, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be incomplete.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion, any other concerns or opinions? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, the Lake Bulkhead, the surveyors began working this morning, May the sixth, and the contractor is anticipating beginning to drive the piles tomorrow afternoon, May the seventh. The new metal roof for the Mill House, which is the trade street, the new proposed Trade Street Museum, has been completed. Previously, I had reported to you all in a weekly update by email that staff and members of the festival committee had met with the representative of the Salvation Army and the representative of Andrew Lannis Media and the Carolina Country Music Awards. Together, they wanted the town to host a benefit country music concert to benefit the Salvation Army with the group The Blue Pickups on Tuesday, July the second. We had tentatively planned for a representative to address the Board of Commissioners this evening. I have notified the representatives of this proposed event that unfortunately, the benefit concert did not pass through the Special Events Committee. There were too many logistical and public safety concerns, plus the proximity to our own town event. Although we're sorry that this event did not work out for us, we would like for them to consider having something this fall or possibly next year when we have more time to work out the details. And I have sent an email to both representatives saying that. The household hazardous waste, shred and litter sweep events, as well as the first farmer's market this past Saturday, were a big success. The shred event filled up twenty-two containers. We had seventeen vendors participate in the farmer's market, one of which was Grace Creek FFA, Future Farmers of America. And we have received notification today that Southview FFA will be participating in the future ones.
Good.
The town is continuing to accept application, applications for the farmer's market, for the season. The tentative date for installation of the new telephone system for all town offices is June the fourth. Jennifer Beadle from the North Carolina State Partif came to visit with us on April the twenty-sixth. She visited the golf course site, Heritage Park and the Hope Mills Lake Park. She strongly recommended that we pursue a grant for Heritage Park in lieu of the golf course site. Her reasoning was for the following reasons. One, its close proximity to town lake and the ability to expand amenities that, that are in that concentrated area. Two, the entire project could be completed with the allocated funds from Partif and the town's match. And three, the proposed park elements and amenities present a strong case for a successful grant. And the timing is perfect for completing the master plan, getting public input and submitting a grant for the 2020 Partif cycle for consideration. Ms. Beadle did mention that the golf course site was a great project, but due to the cost of development and multiple phasing, she thought that Heritage Park was a much stronger and viable project for Partif. She also mentioned that the town should only apply for one grant and that it is not favorable to apply for a grant if the application is not a strong one, meaning that there have to be enough park elements to warrant points and the minimum requirements have, have been met such as master plan approved, public input documented, et cetera. Update on the Rockfish Road sidewalk project. The engineering representative is drafting a letter to the contractor in coordination with NCDOT to notify them that they are at risk for default on the project. Johnson Street sidewalk project, working ninety percent drawings are nearing completion incorporating the PWC comments and changes. The environmental assessment has been completed by the field office and is at the main office for review. Continuing to work through the, they are continuing to work through the right-of-way certification. The ADA Transition Program. Public Works has identified Big T's as a priority project for ADA compliance and it has been identified in the fiscal year 2019, 2020 proposed budget. On Friday, April the twenty-sixth, Stormwater Administrator Beth Brown, representatives of Cumberland County Schools, a liaison for North Carolina State Stormwater graduates and I, met at the Seaway Collier Elementary School to discuss some ideas for alleviating the amount of flooding around the school. All of the ideas that were discussed would require the DOT's input and involvement and unfortunately, they were not able to make that meeting. We are waiting on DOT to notify us when they are going to be conducting the soil, the soil borings, which are tentatively scheduled to begin sometime May-June. The Town of Hope Mills sign ordinance was officially approved and adopted by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners on April fifteenth, 2019. During that time, during the time several workshop, work sessions were held by the town and full adoption, staff received several package, signed package applications from companies that were anticipating the ordinance changes. Although the board was considering an overhaul of the sign ordinance, staff had to approve the sign applications based on the sign regulations that were in place at the time of the submittal. I have listed three recent approvals that were granted for freestanding poles prior to the April fifteenth adoption and those are for the Taco Bell. That sign application was approved and submitted and approved on March fifteenth, 2019 for the repair and replacement of the, of existing thirty-foot pole sign. Case nineteen thirty-two, which was the doctor's office, site plan approval granted on April first, 2019. Sign application was approved on April twelfth for a thirty-foot pole sign. And the Chick Filet, sign application was approved on April the twelfth as well for a thirty-foot pole sign. CBS seventeen is planning to host a luncheon to honor our first responders on Wednesday, July the seventeenth. A member of the storm team will deliver lunch and possibly conduct a Facebook live post and record a short segment for an upcoming newscast. Development and Planning Administrator Chancellor McLaughlin has been enrolled in the Greater Fayetteville Chamber Leadership Academy. This program identifies, motivates and educates potential community leaders. The program selects individuals that will represent different occupations, backgrounds, interests and talents. It is meant to enhance and build upon leadership skills for its participants. This program consists of nine long, nine day-long sessions, once a month for nine months. Mr. McLaughlin is scheduled to graduate on May the twenty-third. The tentative projected date to begin mosquito spraying is Thursday, May the ninth. And finally, Parks and Recreation staff would like to know if the board would like to ride a float again this year for July fourth. Commissioner Larson has already indicated to me that she has no preference, so it's completely up to the rest of you.
Madam Mayor, I would like to see us on a float. I still have renting cars. Those cars are nice, but sometimes they break down or overheat. And we could all go together like we did before.
The only thing I'd remind you, and I think we can take care of that, but the issue before was making sure that we allot enough spots. So I guess that would be the thing, is if we're going to bring our spouse, other children, because I know that was a concern at the last parade, is having room for those. So we might need to just get the number of guests that might be with you, I guess that's the best way to.
And a suitable ladder to get off and on.
Good way to get on and off. Any thoughts, Commissioner Bell, Flops?
Float's good with me.
Float's good for you, Commissioner Edwards?
I float.
Okay, we'll float, float, everybody float?
Float.
All right, we're floating.
Float it is.
Mike's going to float, he knows he's going to.
And I guess the main thing would be then to decide how many the float will hold.
Right.
So that way we'd be covered on numbers. Okay, all right.
If they allowed two each, that would be enough for the families.
Madam Mayor, I did have a question. Biscuitville, is that a pole or a monument?
They hadn't submitted, so it would be under the new regulations.
Which will be monument, thank you.
I know Waffle House is a pole.
I mean, I knew the answer, I just wanted to, I wanted to hear it.
I didn't want this to be a surprise, so, you know, I, I asked Mr. McLaughlin to get the information together so that I could inform you all in a public meeting so that it's not a, doesn't come as a huge surprise to anyone, you know, when they start putting the signs up.
There's going to be questions, why this and why that, you know, so.
Well, it's, it's answered clearly.
Is there damage to the Sonic sign?
I'm not aware that they've submitted, I don't believe they've submitted anything, no.
There's damage with the Sonic sign.
Okay.
That was the other one I had.
We can go have a look at it, but again, they've not submitted a replacement, so it would fall under the new, if it's fifty percent damaged or more.
I think the whole sign's gone. Well, okay. All right.
Okay, all righty. I have.
Oh, two of these?
Thank you, and I, I do want to, to recognize the fact that on Saturday, the staff, that not only were they here, but they were all in green shirts and they all worked long hours and so we just need to appreciate the fact that they gave their time and effort and it was a great event from the, the, what was going on in Parks and Rec, to what was going outside, to what was going on with people being able to come and park, farmer's market, the cleanup, the shredding, and you back it up to what we did, the National Day of Prayer, the truck, the rodeo. This past week was not only a busy week, the Veterans Event on Friday. The town was busy and it was well, well-received and well-attended. So just know that Hope Mills Proud and the staff, we're. So just know that Hope Mills Proud and the staff, we're very proud of you and everything you've done. I can't, can't tell you how nice it is for us to not only be there, but to see you guys working, so Ms. Adams and, and all of you, because, you know, we saw Drew out there and Don working over with the shredder, and the police were here. I want to give a shout out too to Officer Joseph. Officer Joseph came up to Southview with me, because I started there with the cleanup, and he decided, because there was so much up there on the lot beside Dove's property up there beside Kaufman Shopping Center, he helped me pick up trash, and so I told him not to tell Chief Ruchero that instead of monitoring the road, that he helped, but a great job, and he was the family really, really enjoyed being with him too. The other thing that I have, Mayor's Coalition, we went and Ms. Arling attended with me, and in front of you, you have two documents that I brought back that I thought was important that you know, and I'm hoping that Chief Hodges has seen this, as far as the Cumberland County Fire Service funnel, funding model for 2019-2020. Have you been, have you seen this?
Yes, ma'am, on Mac, we have the public safety task force that recommended that.
Okay, very good. But I brought the.
That's for the county fire department.
Right. This is, every time you look at this, you'll notice that Spring Lake and Hope Mills are not included, but this is what has been recommended for all the air, fire departments in unincorporated areas. But this was something that they went over with us at the Mayor's Coalition, so I brought this back. It's not, I'm not gonna go over it with you, but the idea is it's good reading material, and then, of course, I wanted to make sure Chief Hodges was aware of it. The other thing that you have before you is the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments, the study and recommendations. They did a study because of Mid-Carolina not really feeling, or not, not doing what they thought they should do. So it was a study to find out who was accountable, and this particular group works for three counties for our region. And one of the ways it benefited us at one time was it helped, when we would have the Sunshine Center up on Davis Street, they did help fund the Mills up there. But we have since found out that there's a long list of things that they should be doing, and so they're revamping it, and we'll see more opportunities to receive more services from them. So I brought this back also. This is just a study and recommendations. It hasn't been acted on yet, and they've got to actually hire a new director, but this, I think, was important that the staff know. It was a very good meeting with the Mayor's Coalition. Again, we had, they had a new wellness thing that they're gonna include all the municipalities in. It's a partnership with WOMAC, Federal Tech, Federal State, Methodist.
Campbell.
And Campbell. And what they're doing is they're gonna do a promotion. It is just really neat, because the Mayor's Coalition gets a lot of, we had a packed house at Eastover, but most importantly, is good information, so there'll be more information coming as far as the minutes of the meeting, but I wanted to share those two things with you. The other thing that I have is that the, we're being invited, Post 10-630 has invited us to the Memorial Day Ceremony, the 27th of May at 4:00 PM, and what they're asking it, and of course, I want to thank again town staff, because town clerk, our town clerk has already done the proclamation needed for this day, so appreciate the fact that that's ready. But this is Memorial Day, which is gonna be, the ceremony will be May 27th at 4:00, and it'll be up here at Town Hall, Town Parks and Rec. That's all I have. Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell is the Liaison for Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know if he left anything, did he give anything? I know Commissioner Larson usually attends.
I actually was the liaison, but I don't have the notes with me, because I thought he was gonna be here, so he got them from Ms. Waring.
Okay. So we'll wait for his report at the next meeting. Commissioner Edwards, Lake Advisory and the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
Lake Advisory won't be meeting until the 21st, and Mid-Carolina, we only meet once a quarter, but this information that you gave us is what we'll probably be discussing.
Okay, Commissioner Legg, Appearance Committee and the Festival Committee.
I did not attend the Appearance Committee meeting, but we had a Festival Committee meeting earlier this evening, and there's so many unsure things before them that they can't really plan anything for exact date because of the bulkhead and, and other things like that. Did you pick up anything else from that, Madam Mayor?
I think Megan just went over the calendar for Parks and Rec with us and the events coming up, and just plugged in some things that they could help with, but the idea is that the next meeting, they'll look at what they can add, because they didn't want to give up completely on some of the activities that they did last year in the lake celebration. But yeah, that, that was basically what it was, was just a review of things. Then Commissioner Larson, Parks and Rec.
The Parks and Rec Committee got to meet Lamarcio, so he did a little introduction and his previous employment. They talked about the YMCA again. I felt like the general consensus is that they don't feel the YMCA is a beneficial partnership for the town, and we're more interested in looking into an outdoor pool or splash pad or something on that idea rather than an indoor aquatic center. They did discuss about the wagon wheel. I would say the majority of them liked the idea of it. There were some concerns about infrastructure, that the town doesn't have the hotels, or the roads, or restaurants to meet the needs for a wagon wheel. But then the other side of the argument was that if we build it, that maybe we would get hotels and restaurants, so that was kind of a little bit of a debate on that. Let's see, what else? There was also discussion about the concession stands. The only notes I had were the same ones that I had from Lamarcio too, was the Youth Association and Big T's concession stands and the town. I'm not exactly sure where, where they were going with that, on that, but they were both brought up. And that was about it.
Okay. And next we have Commissioner Bell Flowers with Veterans Committee and Rulak.
Thank you, Mayor. Veterans Affairs Committee met on Thursday, April 25th. It was a very robust meeting, as all of them have been in the past. We had a couple special guests at this one. One of them was our Hope Mills Area Chamber of Commerce President, Jan Spell, along with the Executive Director, and that would be Kelly Spell. So both of them were in attendance. And the reason why is because they were invited to attend as a partner of our future planning for Hero's Homecoming 7 events. And of course, we know that the town's theme is Normandy '75, and along with that, there'll be some reference from Memorial Day in honor of Normandy '75, and then there's gonna be, there are some plans for a small ceremony of recognition and honor on June 6th, and that will be a partnership between VFW Post 10-630, American Legion 32, and members of the Veterans Affairs Committee. Again, that's June 6th, and I don't have all the dates finalized yet, because it's still in the planning phase to do that. There've been talk, there's, there's some planning about a Veterans Day Dinner, that's coming up, some planning on the future months. We've already talked about May 3rd. Memorial Day, you've already talked about. The veterans outreach was a huge success, that was on Friday, that's already been discussed. A number of veterans were, were helped, were helped there. I don't know if it's gonna be an annual event, it may, it may be a bi-annual event, because more and more, and the reason I say this is because more and more organizations are starting to do these almost quarterly. We do that on FTCC, and it's a huge, huge opportunity to reach area veterans. So that may be a proposal that the committee will be looking at in the coming months. And finally, each of you, I have given you the first copy of the first quarter report of all the activities that I have briefed over these first quarter months. It's a recap of, of everything that the Veterans Affairs Committee has done in the first quarter. And I think it's some very good reading, so it's, and so it's really inclusive, so take the time to please read that. That's all about the committee. Rulak is meeting again Thursday, May 16th, which is next week, and instead of going to the Hilltop, we will go up the Ramsey to Grandson's Buffet. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice meetings.
We've been at the Hilltop for the, what, last two, I think?
Yeah.
It's a nice place to go, too.
Yeah, now we're going to Grandson's, okay.
All you can eat. Next we have staff comments. Do we have any staff comments for this evening?
I would just like to let everyone know that I have started loading the minutes of the board's committees and commissions onto the town's website. If you click on their individual title, it will bring up their, their main page with the calendar and the meetings and the minutes. Thus far, I have a really good set for the Veterans Affairs Committee, and I have a good set for the Lake Advisory Committee. I don't have many, or I don't have them turned in, or the Appearance Commission, or the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Historic Preservation Committee. I've, commission. I've asked them a few months ago to start sending those to me, and I've had spotty response, so I'm going to reach out again to those organizations and ask them to be sure and send me their minutes, so we can get those posted on the website for our citizens.
Okay, and it looks good. It really does, it looks great.
And I have, I have a flyer for you all for the 4th of July. Commissioner Larson had asked me earlier today, and so I'll pass this out to you all, but the, the parade begins at 10:00 AM, and then the party in the park is from 4:00 to 10:00. Fireworks will be at 9:15 on Fields 1 and 2, and there'll be a foam pit, a climbing wall, mechanical shark ride, which will be fun, large petting zoo, inflatable water slide, food trucks, and live music, it's Open Road and the guy, Unger Band. So I'll give these to you all, or they're here if you want to pick one up. And we have, we will post this information on our Facebook page, and I believe it's already on, I don't know if it's on our website, but there, I think they're still kind of reworking this flyer, so it may be subject to change, but we'll start getting the word out to the citizens about our summer events. And I did want to just add one more item for, the mayor mentioned about the amount of staff that was here on Saturday, and, you know, it was an unusual situation where we were having four different events. So, but we strategically planned the first Farmers Market to get started when we knew we would have a lot of foot traffic, such as this past weekend, and also June 1st, which is Pet Fest, and there'll probably be about 2,000 people over here, and we'll have our Farmers Market over there. So we were kind of giving that a edge. But I did want to give a shout out to CERT, because they have graciously offered to come and work the Farmers Markets. There were two members here Saturday that assisted with vendors, vendor parking, and, you know, any questions that the vendors had, and so I did want to just thank them. They are going to make that a regular event, that they will come and work.
That's good.
And then the Festival Committee, I'm sorry, not the Festival Committee, but the, the Staff Committee that we have formed for Arts and Culture. Between, I think there's eight or nine of us, between us, there will be a member or two, we haven't really worked all the details, but there will be someone initially at the Farmers Market, but not all of, not everybody will be there each time, so I, I just want to, you know, make that, clarify that, that this past weekend was a little bit unusual, and I think everybody was excited about all the events as well, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything? You don't want to talk? All right, official comments? You know, start at either end, does anybody want to just?
I'll jump in.
Okay, go right ahead.
Hey, I want to thank the staff too for, for the weekend, because I'll tell you, the, the comments have all been positive, and don't, and, and remember, there was a woodpecker's game going on, and we still had a tremendous amount of people that were here for the food truck rodeo. And I mean, it was, and I think the vendors are growing, the trucks are growing, the interest is growing. My catfish truck was there, I expect them to come back from Cedar Creek, if you like catfish like I do. And the comments that you hear are so, so positive, because it's family-oriented. And Chancellor, hats off to that jazz band, that was the bomb.
One thing I will tell you.
The bomb.
Catfish truck, yeah, the Farmers Market, that's a question.
Yeah, they had, they did get an application, and they've indicated they want to come to the Farmers Market.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, because I, because I came back, you know, on, for the Farmers Market looking for them, again, but, but I'm glad they're coming back. These are all positives, Mayor. That's, and like I said, that's who we are.
Yep. And also, I just, Commissioner Larson had asked me earlier too about the food, when speaking about the food truck rodeo. I think last year, we had discussed, you know, that if it grew, and that we would at some point possibly implement a fee. And so in the new proposed budget, there is a fee proposed, because it has grown to the point where we feel that that's warranted, and so that is in your fee schedule, your new fee schedule. I believe it's in red, so, any new fees are in red, so just want to let you all know that.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, you have anything?
Yes, I'm gonna say something too, everybody else is, but I just, I think it's wonderful that, that the staff, it's not us, but the staff, in their own initiative and everything, have worked together and come together, and our planner is doing fantastic, I mean, the police department, fire department, our staff, they have really brought this town together. I mean, you see families coming out, people that I haven't seen in a long time. It's a community effort that you all have created, and it's nothing but kudos for you all. The Farmers Market, the strawberries, I myself like the Hawaiian pineapple bowl, it is delicious, I only get it once a month, that's from the food truck, but it was delicious, and there's just so many things that you do. I mean, you have the Citizens Academy, the people are getting interested in it, and just all the programs that you're doing, and I think, I think you're doing a fantastic job. I'm proud of you. That's all.
Would you like me to go next?
Whichever one wants to go.
Go ahead.
So I was out of town, so I missed both events. I was out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday out of town, so, but I heard wonderful things, great pictures. I did my cleanup for the town the weekend before, I almost put myself in traction for four hours, but everyone was very happy, and they really enjoyed, from what I've heard, and the pictures were fantastic on the administration page.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess Mark, Lamarcio hit the road running when he got here, and I understand he's doing a very fine job. I enjoyed coming by the, the Farmers Market the other day. By the way, if you didn't buy the strawberries, they were very sweet and juicy. They were really good. The pound cakes were good. My wife just loaded up. Told us, if we can skip the grocery store, you've got everything here. I would also like to thank the staff for all the hard work that you've done, and I got two other things, three, I guess. One. One, please fix that light.
Yeah, all right, I see that, I made note of that.
Please fix that light, and let's remember Debbie Jones and her family in our prayers tonight, as her, her dad passed away this weekend, and, uh, if you're done, Mayor, I'm ready to go home.
Okay, if we could send something from the town to.
We, we've already taken care of that, Madam Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, for Ms. Jones, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Sitnick.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, because, um, again, and if you, if you check some of the, if you go to his Facebook page, he's got beautiful pictures, and they're of Hope Mills.
Yep.
And the lake, so if you could just, if we could send him a note.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you, that would be wonderful. All righty, anything else for the good of the board? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, yes, please.
All righty, thank you, y'all have a good evening, and we'll see you soon.